Still waiting. All right, seven o'clock. The Monday, November 3rd, City of Vandelia Council Meeting is now called to order. We'll begin with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, Council, you've had an opportunity to review the study session meeting minutes and the council meeting minutes of September 15th. Are there any comments or corrections? Being none they stand approved, that brings us to Communications, Petitions and Awards, where we have an introduction this evening of Ms. Kayla Sensenbaugh, the Recreational Facilities Manager. I'll turn it over to Chief Altouse. Mr. Altouse.
There you go. Thank you, Your Honor. Kayla, if you don't mind standing, I'm going to introduce you to our audience and our council this evening. So, this is Kayla Sensenbaugh. She joined Vandelia team here on October 20th, and she brings a wealth of experience from working with several parks and recreation organizations in both Dayton, Ohio and the Wichita, Kansas area. She earned her master's degree in Recreation and Tourism Management from Clemson University and her bachelor's in Organizational Leadership from Wright State University. She's excited to serve the Vandelia community. Her goal is to continue to provide excellent recreational experiences to the community and go above and beyond to serve everyone who walks through the doors at the rec center. When she's not working, Kayla enjoys spending time with her daughters, especially taking the parks and community events, and she enjoys and loves playing pickleball and cheering on the Kansas City Chiefs. So, her favorite football team.
Boo.
So, Kayla, welcome aboard. I don't know if that's a positive thing or negative thing, but we're glad to have you on board. So, thank you so much for being here. Thank you for being part of our team. We're excited to get to know you and have you oversee our recreation center.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, we had Trina Stewart with the Mobile Crisis Counselor to make a presentation. However, she's not going to be able to be here this evening, so we'll have her at a future meeting. And that brings us to a public hearing, which we have done, and now we have comments from interested citizens. At this time, we'd like to welcome any comments from any interested citizens. If they'd like to make a comment as you come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record. We further ask of those who speak, please follow the etiquette of communicating with respect to others, and as a courtesy, please try to stay on topic with your statements. And a reminder, this is not a forum for arguments or debates. And in an effort to give all citizens an opportunity to express their thoughts and concerns, we ask that you keep your comments as brief as possible and limit them to five minutes. If anyone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium.
Robert Shanahan, 7733 South Brown School Road. I have a question. Where can I find the exact wording of Vandelia City Ordinance 25-02? I'm asking because the city website contains ordinances through June 2015, and the American Legal website hasn't been updated since October 2024. Are they printed somewhere that we can find them?
We can certainly provide that through you, to you, so...
Can we put it up on the screen? Does somebody have it right now? In particular, Section 4? The reason I ask, I was at the second reading of this ordinance back on March 3rd, when the final vote took place, and I've also watched the video of that meeting too many times. So, I'm curious why what was voted on concerning the traffic impact study does not match what was recorded as Section 4 of that particular ordinance. The relevant section of the March 3rd, 2025 council meeting video, as posted on the Vandelia City YouTube page, where the final amendments to the proposed ordinance were finalized before final votes were tallied, at timestamp 2 hours, 28 minutes and 0 seconds, Councilman Folick states, "New amendments to the proposed ordinance that we voted on, including," and I quote, "the completion of a traffic study prior and implementation of changes prior to the approval of the final development plan." Immediately after that, that passed 5 to 2. But somehow, what ended up in Section 4 of that ordinance is prior to the approval, and I don't need to go on, it was read earlier. So, did those two excerpts sound the same to anyone in this room? Who is responsible for the final wording that ends up being published? Is it the city's policy to amend proposed ordinances on the fly, vote for them, then record something entirely different? Tell the voting public one thing, then implement something else and hope they don't catch on? That seems nothing short of highly immoral, unethical, and possibly even illegal to me. How often does this happen? I've only verified one vote and one resulting ordinance, and they don't match. I'm batting 100% so far. Can someone explain this to me? That's not a rhetorical question.
Well, we will certainly look at the ordinance, and I'll watch the video to check out what you're telling us, but it is recorded, it's recorded into the ordinance as it's set in the meeting.
Well, I don't think so, because I clearly stated, unless you're saying that I don't know what I'm talking about.
We'll certainly take a look at it.
When?
We'll look at it this week.
You can't pull anything up right now? The video, the ordinance? No.
All right, any further comments?
Yeah, I do, actually. So, over the past year, I've been told by more than one council member, directly and indirectly, that council is legally obligated to vote the same as Planning Commission votes. Is that true or false?
No.
No.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Planning Commission is a recommending body to council.
Okay. Well, someone has been mistaken. All right, thanks.
And I would just note, I respect, I'll get with you, because I think we have your information. If not, I'll get them before we leave here, so we can get with you. But I would say that, knowing our staff, there is no one that would be doing things illegal, unethical, if, as your remarks made. The staff records the meeting minutes, and there's nothing to hide. If there's things that need to be corrected, we will certainly look into those and address them.
All right, anybody else like to make a comment?
Hello, my name's Jeff Hoagland, 817 Deerhurst Drive, Vandelia, Ohio. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I just, more of a protocol question. So, based on what Bob just wrote, or just read, traffic study completed with recommendations, implemented prior to the final development of the plan. If that, if you all go back and, once you review it, and if it states that, and if the vote was 5-2 with those verbatim words, which, knowing Bob, they are, he probably watched that video 2,000 times, but if that's what was approved, what does city council, what will they be voting on, on the final plan in two weeks?
What we'll present is what was in that initial ordinance. So, we'll look at the meeting minutes. I will certainly look at the meeting minutes. I'll look at the ordinance. If there is any conflict there or any dispute, we will certainly make council aware of that, so that you're aware of it before any vote is taken place, and we'll bring it toward at the next meeting at the first reading.
I would, I guess I would, I would ask if, when you go back to do your review tomorrow, if it does say that, and if it's verbatim, that it, implementation, I would think that probably postponing the, until you all decide what that truly means, because if implementation means construction of the roadway system, to me, that's going to take more than two weeks, and I just, I still don't understand the rush that I saw for the rezoning of the property. It got, then got moved to a planned unit development, which I think is fantastic. I think it's one of the best zoning tools a city council can have. I personally thought that the city could have gotten a lot more out of that planned unit development. There are homes in our neighborhood now selling for $545,000, where the developer said in the meeting that the price range, the high point, was around maybe $400,000 if he was lucky. I think that was very underestimated. I think if we would have held out for a better plan, better materials, better traffic study, and the whole traffic issue is a whole another point, is for the city to, I mean, the city's known that's been a problem. I know the study showed that it's a big problem, but for that not to even be on the CIP plan, but we're, from just the workshop, it sounded like we were rushing just to do the development and get it done in '26 and '27 to help the developer. It is not the city's responsibility to help the developer. It's the developer's responsibility to help the city. And as you all move forward, I don't know what the rush is. Let's do this, let's do it right, let's do it together as a community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Leon Mabel, 778 Foxfire Trail. Two comments. First of all, about that traffic study with, on Brown School. It's flawed from the very beginning. It was done after the school year had ended, and all the bus traffic had stopped, and it was done during the summer. Flawed. Now, my second comment is relating to the second reading tonight of Ordinance 25-26 regarding the rezoning of land at 770 Bolton Abbey Lane. I'm speaking on behalf of me and several other of our neighbors in the original Foxfire neighborhood, who are, a lot of our neighbors are out tonight supporting the Flyers. But I ask you, what's changed? Why go from an RSF2 to an RSF4? Developer says it's like a handful of houses, like eight houses is the difference. I ask you to please stop degrading our neighborhood for a small number of houses and tell this developer no for a change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tanya Brown, 4428 Poplar Creek Road, Vandelia. I just have a question. When you do re-listen to the actual wording that was voted on at that meeting, what would be the remedy? What would you possibly be able to do? I noticed that when Mr. Hunt, I believe that's his name, was reading the ordinance, he was very adamant and somewhat, you know, spoke very strongly about the actual language. So, if the language that was voted on that night is different than the actual language that's in the ordinance, what is the remedy for that? How do you address that? And I'd like to know, who is the one that actually writes the ordinance out? Who takes that meeting language that you voted on and puts that into an ordinance? Who does that?
That is our Deputy Clerk of Council.
Okay. Okay. Just curious about that. And then what would the remedy be if the language is incorrect?
It's staff that writes their own ordinances, and then I put it into Granicus, and that's what the mayor signs, what we approve that night. So, the ordinances that are in the council packets that are available online on our city website, and what you see on the screen is what the mayor signs that night.
Okay, so, but who writes that? Who wrote out the words that were on that?
Each staff member writes out the proposed resolutions that are going forward.
But if there's new, if there's additional conditions, it's what...
That's what I mean. Yeah, those conditions, who translates what was added as conditions onto the ordinance? Who does that? Who took those words that night and put that into the actual ordinance?
That's going to be staff. Staff will put those in there.
Okay. I was just curious. Who was responsible for that?
I don't think we need to accuse anybody. I agree with, I don't think anybody purposely would do that, but I think staff needs to look at what's going, what happened, and I do not know the remedy for that. We've not knowingly experienced that before, so I'd be curious.
No remedy? What would you do?
I will advise council.
Okay, thank you.
Would anybody else like to make a comment? All right, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to the city manager's report. Turn it over to Mr. Altouse.
Thank you, Your Honor. On Saturday, November 8th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Vandelia Sports Complex Baseball Concession Stand, prepare for a smashing good time at our Pumpkin Smash. Bid a gleeful farewell to your Halloween pumpkins in the most spectacular way possible. Grab your gourds and join us for a day of pumpkin smashing mayhem. From gravity-defying drops to pumpkin bowling, it's a carnival of orange explosions and satisfying splatter. And you can unleash your inner pumpkin demolition expert and turn ordinary pumpkins into extraordinary memories. Let the smashing commence. It's the ultimate pumpkin farewell party. All pumpkin debris is composited after the event, and this is a free event, and all ages are welcome. And secondly, we have our leaf collection, which will continue until December. The leaf pickup schedule is on the city's website. Leaves must be raked into the street, and any leaves on the grass behind the curb will not be picked up. In areas without curbs, leaves must be placed immediately along the edge of the pavement. Crews will not collect leaves piled more than one foot away from the edge of the roadway.
All right, thank you. We have no action items, and we have no old business. That brings us to our first resolution of the evening, that being Resolution 25-R-51. Mr. McDonald, by title only.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into a purchase and sale agreement for certain land located in Stone Quarry Crossing and to close on the sale of such land.
Thank you. Mr. Altouse.
Thank you, Your Honor. City Council will consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for property located in Stone Quarry Crossings.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept Resolution 25-R-51.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Dugan and a second by Councilwoman Farsh to accept Resolution 25-R-51 as presented. Are there any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Farsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver.
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley.
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. We have a couple ordinances in their first reading, the first one being Ordinance 25-27.
An ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Vandelia, Ohio during the calendar year ending December 31, 2026, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Altouse.
Thank you, Your Honor. The 2026 proposed budget is complete, and legislation has been prepared for council consideration. There were three changes applied to the proposed budget after the second budget workshop, and they are as follows. Removal of 2030 Capital Request and Capital Improvement Fund for the Art Park Solar Pathway Lighting in the amount of $310,000. Reduction of street resurfacing costs from 2026 to 2030 in the Street Fund by a total of $1 million, and increased cost for street resurfacing in the 2026 to 2030 in the Police Fire Street CIP Fund by a total of $1 million. Once the year 2025 has been closed and balanced in early 2026, the actual final revenue and expense amounts will be entered into the new budget software ClearGov, and the 2025 final and 2026 budget digital book will be created, available and distributed in late February 2026 in both electronic and paper formats.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Ordinance 25-27 in the first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Lewis to approve Ordinance 25-27 in its first reading. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Farsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Next, we have Ordinance 25-28, its first reading.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $18 million in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of improving the city's facilities by constructing, furnishing, and equipping a public works complex, including related site improvements, together with all necessary and related appurtenances thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Altouse.
Thank you, Your Honor. In preparation for the upcoming Public Works Facility Project, the city will be securing funds for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $18 million in anticipation of the issuance of bonds at a later date. The interest rate on the note shall not exceed 6% and will mature on December 1st, 2026. Issuing a one-year renewal note will provide flexibility to monitor the interest rate and allow for the opportunity to pay down additional funds received through grant funding or planned budgeting at maturity in 2026, and assist in the decision-making process to either continue with the issuance of renewal notes or switch to bonds. The difference in financing between notes and bonds is with notes, the interest rate varies each year, and issuance costs are assessed with each annual borrowing. Bonds include a fixed interest rate and issuance cost, albeit higher, but are only assessed at the initial borrowing.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
I'll move to accept Ordinance 25-28.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Dugan and a second by Vice Mayor Blakesley to approve Ordinance 25-28. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Farsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. We have one ordinance in its second reading, that being Ordinance 25-26.
An ordinance rezoning 15.478 acres of land located at 770 Bolton Abbey Lane from residential single-family to residential single-family, RS, I'm sorry, residential single-family RSF2 to residential single-family RSF4 and agriculture, and amending the zoning map of the city.
Thank you. Mr. Altouse.
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant, Greg Burling, on behalf of Campbell Burling Development, requested a change of zoning for the property at 770 Bolton Abbey Lane. The proposal involves rezoning one parcel totaling 15.485 acres, plus or minus, from the RSF2 residential single-family district to the RSF4 residential single-family and A agricultural districts. If approved, the property would be developed with 35 new single-family residential homes as Section 8 of the Foxfire subdivision. On September 23rd, 2025, the Planning Commission voted 2 to 1 in favor of staff's recommendation of approval.
Thank you. And since this is an ordinance in its second reading, I'll open a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this ordinance, please come to the podium and state your name and address clearly for the record. And in an effort also to give everyone an opportunity to express their thoughts, we ask that you keep your comments as brief as possible and limit them to five minutes as stated in Ordinance 84-01.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Greg Burling with Campbell Burling Development, 3333 Madison Pike, Fort Wright, Kentucky, 41017. Just here, I got to talk to you about this at the planning session, and just a couple more comments. There was, met with staff a number of times, met with the residents a number of times on Zoom and in person, and it seems like there was some key items that they wanted to see on a plan, and the connection to Bolton Abbey Lane, upgraded landscaping in the community, home design, helping preserve the value of the neighborhood, and then creating more open space buffer between the new homes and the existing homes. So, with that in mind, met with my engineer, landscape architect, and the builder on a new land plan, to look into the, what the residents are looking for, also met with staff, seeing if there's, to talk about things with the city on what we can do to improve this land plan. So, what came out of these meetings and planning sessions is what's before you today. And the request for zone change from RSF2 to RSF4, which means lot width is reduced to match current Section 9, where Fisher Homes is building now, and the addition of six lots. And so, the questions come up, it came up in the Planning Commission meeting, it also came, Mr. Mabel brought it up today, is why change? And I would expect the same question of council, why change? With this change, I can create four acres of open space. It's just 26% of this section. With the open space, I can create landscape areas in the side yards at the creek crossings between existing and new homes. This change is very effective for 10 lots, new lots in the subdivision, where their neighbor is open space on one side. These become premium lots in the subdivision, and they, it makes this plan much, much better. Including with these lots, there's nice landscape buffer that makes for a great neighborhood streetscape, as well for privacy for the rear yards of those homes. And I also added open space, so that current residents, the Whippies and the Barbers, have more buffer between their homes and the new homes. So, I'm also committed to a playground or a park on the McGovern lot. I have talked to Ms. McGovern. She is willing to transfer that parcel for a park. It was meant to be a park in the past, and all she asked was for a plaque to honor her husband, who developed and built in Foxfire. And that lot would be maintained by the HOA. Lastly, this change helps us maintain the values in Foxfire and continue what we are doing in Section 9. We thought the market there would be 375,000. Now, the current sales are averaging 414,000, which is aligning well with where the market is. The 10 sales of existing homes in Foxfire over the past two years are averaging in that same range. So, we feel we know where the market is. You know, the price ranges from below 300s up to over 500,000. So, we're hitting the range that we thought we would. In addition, a little commitment we presented is Fisher Golfing only the brick and stone elevations. I believe staff would have sent you those elevations to see, and example, those are in the packet. One other item is, there's a flag portion of the property that goes out to Poplar Creek Road. Actually, Ms. Tanya Brown, I've talked to her about transferring that to those residents. That's a current private drive for all those residents there, and it would be better that it goes to them versus staying with me as a developer. The intent of all these changes was to create a neighborhood streetscape that is a big improvement of what I can offer with RSF2. I can't provide the open space or the landscaping with that RSF2 plan. So, it adds significant open space landscaping, and they're, these are great amenities for the current, future residents. So, if there's any questions, I'm free to answer them, but thank you for my time.
I have a question. I think you sat through our study session, listening to the other part. What are your thoughts in hearing that your houses being added will also be adding to the street construction, or street issues, and you're not being held accountable for those?
I was not here for the study session. I came up right after.
Okay. So, we're holding, we are asking the development across the street to pay for a portion of the road improvements, because we recognize that Foxfire actually has a large accountability for the road issues that are here now, existing, and now the city has to answer for that and pay for those issues. And now, you're going to be developing here and adding issues that are also going to be contributing to that. So, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, was there a traffic study done when Foxfire was originally developed? The section that I'm developing is, was currently, or is currently approved as part of the Foxfire plan, that's part of the original development.
That went back to 1993, didn't it?
Yeah.
The original Foxfire plan.
It would have been a long time, yeah, yeah. I don't know if there was a traffic study done then, but the section I'm developing was approved long before I was involved, so...
Yeah, I want to know your thoughts for today, and the certain situation that Vandelia looks like today.
Thoughts about paying for a traffic study for 30...
I just want to know what you think on adding more houses to the street that the people across the street are paying for a portion of. That's all.
I'm adding 35 lots, and the previous section was 29, to current plan, so I, you know, I don't know if there's requirements for that. Usually, there's a threshold for how many homes that go in that then you have to do a traffic study, but I don't really have a comment on that.
You don't have a comment?
No. I don't know what you're asking. Are you asking if I be...
I guess we'd have to ask staff. Was there any consideration for the development on that section in the calculations of the traffic study? When you calculated everybody's percentages?
So, this one didn't require, this one also did not meet the standards for requiring a traffic study, and so there was none, and obviously, when it went through the original proposal process...
We didn't, that wasn't...
Years ago, there never was an issue or a request by council at that time to request a traffic study, so...
And the Riverdale proposal is a PUD. This is a simple rezoning, so there's no conditions on this rezoning. So, it's an apples-to-oranges comparison when it comes to developments.
Yeah, I mean, and in other developments I've done, when you're getting up into the 160, 200 lot range, then that's your typical, you would be required to do a traffic impact study, but when you're in an existing subdivision that's already been approved, I... But when you're in an existing subdivision that's already been approved, I have not had to deal with that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is there any other questions while he's here? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
Alex Gonadre, 751 Foxfire Trail. I just want you guys as a council to consider, you know, over this last year with everything with the Riverdale, I think the citizens have strongly voiced their concerns that they don't want housing like the neighboring cities. And I don't feel that the improvements that they've proposed for this rezone justify, you know, I don't feel the improvements justify the proposed landscaping. And it's, I know part of their sales pitch is that it's, the rezone would be consistent with what they're working on right now. However, this is not consistent with the majority of the Foxfire subdivision of the RSF2 homes. And last but not least, as our city motto even says right over here, we're a small city with a big opportunity. I challenge you guys to get the builders to build larger homes. We don't have any more larger homes going into the city. We don't have that much more land left to develop inside the current city perimeter. And I think this is a good opportunity for us to challenge a builder. I know Fisher has another line of homes that are larger. I think this would be a good opportunity for us to challenge them to level up and put the next level of homes in that would be more of a compliment to the Foxfire subdivision. So, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Leon Mabel, 778 Foxfire Trail. And as you're considering this ordinance in the second reading, I ask you to put on your common sense hat. This developer wants to add eight additional lots and he says you're going to offer more open space. Does that make sense to you? I just ask that you think about that before you vote. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
I just want to make sure it's six additional lots.
Six additional lots.
Yeah, six additional lots. And then just the comment about Fisher's level homes, I went through the, where we are with the market and that they're proving where the market is in this neighborhood with homes they're building and it's meeting and are exceeding the prices that are in Foxfire currently. So you know, Fisher's a big builder, they are a family-owned company, but they are a big builder and they do their market studies and they pick the homes that they can sell for the highest price and they feel like they're doing it in here and we're kind of proving it from there, so.
Thank you. All right, one last time. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Ordinance 25-26 in the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Councilwoman Dugan to approve Ordinance 25-26 in its second reading. Any comments or questions from council?
I would only say, and I've heard the argument on a number of projects that we've had, from my own experience, I live in a subdivision in town, Woodland Meadows, that is directly contiguous to the original subdivision that sits in front, Allen-Hurst Lane. And those homes are smaller and some 30 or 40 years older. And I have not experienced, either in the neighbors selling or in the appraisals of our homes, any diminution of value because these homes happen to sit contiguous to that other subdivision. It's not completely analogous because this is new construction versus your existing homes, which are beautiful in that subdivision. But my experience has been that there has been no lessening of the value and that's over a 30-year window. So while common sense tells me it surely may affect it, my personal experience has been that it has not. And that's going to govern my thinking here.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I've got at least one. I remember when this went, when we were talking about R4 and R2 that was buffering the industrial side where the restaurants are on Poe Avenue. I remember having the discussion and all the neighborhood was talking about, okay, we'll allow that because that was a buffer. And the conversation went that that's where it would stay. I'm not comfortable with this going further and adding six more lots when the original agreement was, and I realize things can change, but I feel that it is an inconsistency, a detriment to the area in like-kind. That's my opinion. It's not consistent with the rest of the homes. Now, albeit I've been in the area where Fisher Homes have been built, they look nice, but I'm not sure how much that, how much more that benefits. You know, does it stop here? Where is it going to go the next time? Are we going to have, well, it'll be up to another council more than likely, but, you know, and I realize there's a market for it. The market for it's across the street. But I think this is where it stops for me. So I'm not in favor of the additional six lots for the health and safety of the neighborhood.
I concur with Councilman Blakeslee.
I just feel like we're going back to the original agreement and not honoring that, I guess. And I don't know that there's anything official to that. I'm just going on what I remember in the past and the discussion that was had. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver.
No.
Councilmember Dugan.
No.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
No.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee.
No.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes. And the motion passes 4-3.
No.
Fail 4-3, I'm sorry. All right, we have no emergency ordinances and that brings us to reports from boards and commissions where we have a variance request for a six-foot fence in Zone A at 775 Castle Creek Drive.
The applicant Wesley Kohick, on behalf of Caitlin Rogers, has requested a variance to construct a six-foot fence on her corner lot within Zone A for the property located at 775 Castle Creek Drive. The proposal involves allowing a six-foot fence to encroach 12 feet into Zone A. On October 8th, 2025, the Board of Zoning Appeals voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval with the following condition, that the fence shall not extend more than 12 feet into Zone A.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve variance BZA 25-0008 for a six-foot fence in Zone A at 775 Castle Creek Drive with the condition that the fence not exceed more than 12 feet into Zone A.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Vice Mayor Blakeslee to approve variance 25-008 for the six-foot fence in Zone A at 775 Castle Creek Drive with the conditions noted. Are there any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee.
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Council, we've got the meeting minutes from the April 30th, 2025 meeting, along with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of August 20th, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of October 1st, and the Planning Commission meeting minutes of September 23rd. Are there any comments? All right, we'll move on to council comments and we'll begin with Mr. McDonald. Mr. Althouse?
I just wanted to say, despite the rainy weather Thursday morning, I just want to compliment staff publicly for all the work they've done over the years to get the Van Day Bike Way Connector completed. It was a long project, a lot of hurdles to overcome, especially with dealing with the railroad and the bridge and all that was involved in that. But Rob Cron and our planners, Mike Amos, Ben Borden and all those that involved did a fabulous job and it was great to be out there and see that unveil on Thursday. So hopefully, if the weather warms up, we have some people take advantage of that before the winter season sets in.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Dugan.
I just want to wish all the candidates for city council and school board good luck with their races.
Thank you. Councilman Lewis.
Nothing this afternoon, Your Honor.
Councilman Follak.
Nothing, thank you.
Councilwoman Farce.
I had a doctor's appointment Thursday morning and, but I can't believe, we had great partners, I'm sure, and it went well, but I can't believe you had fun out there. It was so cold and rainy. Other than that, nothing, thank you.
We're tough as nails. Councilwoman Avalotus Weaver.
I just wanted to welcome Kayla for joining the recreation, as recreation facility manager. You are joining a great team and I'm sure you already know that and have been welcomed appropriately. And I hope everybody comes out to the Pumpkin Smash. I think was it last year we had over 100-pound pumpkin that they smashed or close to it? It was pretty big. I was, it's always a good time, so I hope that everybody comes out and go out and vote.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Blakeslee.
Good luck to the candidates and that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
The only thing I'll do is again, welcome Ms. Kayla. Glad to have you. Looking forward to working with you here over the coming years. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.